I call to order the Board of Trustee regular meeting for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is now six P M. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give your location?
Hi, Mr. Johnson. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, both of our citizens, and the township and the freedoms that we enjoy here. Thank you for the people protect us across our nation, and protect us as our first responders here, as well as those who are in the military across the world, keeping us safe. Here with their families, as they miss their loved ones. Amen.
Please join with the flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So is it, Miss McKee? Interesting.
Roll call, please, Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here. I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would just like to ask why, again, the agenda was withheld from not only the public, but I as trustee until twenty-five and a half hours before the meeting. I just don't think that's appropriate. We have to properly prepare for these meetings, and we even have residents that wanted to come here for a specific agenda item, and I think it's a courtesy to give them enough time to do that. But I do have to say, for the first time, my agenda items were honored this time, so I appreciate that. This is starting.
Roll call, Ms. Baron.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to adopt the minutes for the August first, twenty twenty-three meeting as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, once again, the minutes do not reflect the business of the township and are stripped of all attempts to any action items. That is improper unless you watch the video, you don't get many topics raised. For example, in the minutes here, as trustee Evans discussed, items he requested for the agenda. There's no mentioning of what was requested, what I said was important to be addressed. It's just whitewashed, and I just think that's inappropriate.
Roll call, Ms. Baron.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I'll go ahead and move over to public comments. Please let your public comments, three minutes per person, just come up to the podium here and state your first name and last name, and your address for the record.
Sean Ruth, Laurel Drive, four three nine Laurel Drive.
Could you say your last name again? Sean, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Keith Bobo.
Oh, hey, Keith, yeah.
Laurel Drive.
Okay.
I'm the one with a speech problem, I can't say.
That's okay. Take your time, take your time.
I'm his neighbor, four two one Laurel Drive. That's my name.
Kyle.
Yeah.
Kyle, okay. You can move to Kyle.
Thank you.
The thing on the agenda tonight is for the property on Laurel Drive, the property transfer, so we're ready to do this. So anything that we can get this expedited, we appreciate it. What do you need from us? Just let us know, we'll be happy to assist you. So it's a big one for a lot of works.
Yeah, I'm getting old.
So anything we can do to expedite this.
Okay, and that's why I asked for it to be on the agenda.
I know, we've been moaning for years, but then it's, I mean, we've already had, like, you know, how much it could be for each of us, and it's all, it just seems to just go on and on, like, I don't, you know, it'd just be nice to put it down.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Do you guys actually have all that, or what?
Well, when we get down, it's on the agenda, so we'll have a discussion.
I provided it to him last year, and I provided it to him again this year.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Judy Kathmeyer, twenty-nine Room Court. I just want to say thank you to the trustees again for, after a year and a half, for bringing up this discussion about exclusionary zones. We've had lots of input on that particular topic over the last year and a half, most recently, an expert who gave his views about it from the Farm Bureau, and we've also had some, you know, expert citizens explaining, not talking about myself. And so, we've heard how solar and solar farms can impact the community, both at a social level and as at an environmental level. So I hope with that discussion, all of this is taken into consideration. We hand it off to the commissioners, and let the commissioners then look at how it will impact all of Lipping County. So I look forward to this step that takes place this evening, hopefully you can firm your vote, and then going on to the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
First come, first served.
My name is Doug Parker, I live at four forty Ballman Road, again, a Reynoldsburg address, four three oh six eight, is in the township area. I am not contiguous to the property immediately west of us, but it's my understanding that there's a fifty-eight acre development that's going to go in there, is that true, anyway, shape or form?
It is not. There was a misinformation or misprint in one of the court announcements, they corrected that, I put it on the Ballman Community website. They referenced the Eastwood Development, that was the hundred and thirty-seven acres that is further west. That article addressed between Roland and Ballman, which caused a lot of concern, and I verified that with the auditor's office, and also our administrator verified that with our zoning inspector, that that forty-eight acres is not annexed, you know, or anything part of that Eastwood Development.
I'm not opposed to development, I'm opposed to irresponsible development, I'm opposed to good development. I was on Pickering City Council the most tumultuous time for December of nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and five, and I swore I'd never come back to another meeting like this and sit on one of those chairs ever again. It's a hostile environment, it's terrible, the way people treat development these days. Property owners have rights, but the community that lives here also has a right as well too, in my opinion. So Reynoldsburg City did not approve any development outside of that annexation agreement, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good news. Last and final thing is, I sat on the planning and zoning committee in Pickerington for six years, I was the chairman of the service committee, I was on the safety committee. I think I'm a pretty qualified candidate to help out here, for I see there was a position on the VZA that's being appointed, that type of thing. I would like to see, is there any place where these things are advertised, where I can apply for these positions? Because I'd like to apply for them in the interview, because I think I can offer some good insight to the community. I've seen a lot of things, I've watched the Wyoming two fifty-six, I've seen the mistakes that we've made, I'm not running for any type of office whatsoever, all I want to do is help, and I want to make sure it's responsible. Which leads me to my last point here, try not to use up three minutes here, but, and this is not directed at anybody, it's not directed at any one of the members, it's directed more to the audience than it is, than to the trustees. In council of Pickerington, we were provided, one week prior to our planning and zoning committee, we were given the plans of what developers were going to do. So we'd have a week to study it and look for pitfalls, access problems, potential things that the, our engineer had missed. And so we put an extra set of eyes with seven people on this, and that's what we did. That's why those agendas came out seven days in advance, and so it gave us time. And I think the same thing holds true here for the trustees. If the agendas came out a week in advance, people would be able to look at them and look at the development and say, okay, this was approved, this is going on here, they can read through the minutes and say, no, that wasn't correct, they can do these types of things. And that's why I fill the minutes, and the agenda should be brought forward much sooner than the last one. And so it's just my two cents work, and that's my three minutes, and I thank everybody for being here, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Perkins, seven three five two Palm Road. I'm just looking at the agenda, noticing that, let's again bring up industrial solar. I again just want to urge the board and everybody in the audience to be open-minded about what solar is and what it isn't, and also, there's a lot of misunderstanding as far as what constitutes industrial solar. Again, just remind everybody, you need approximately two hundred and fifty acres of solar panels that get to the fifty megawatt criteria to be justified as industrial solar. In my quick view, not to say that you couldn't merge properties or anything like that, at present, there is exactly one property that I found with two hundred and fifty acres in that township this month. So at that point, I just want to kind of temper that a little bit, so that we know that we're making decisions that are educated, rather than the ones that are just based off our emotions or politics, or whatever the case may be, on that, that we know that we truly, when we try and regulate things, are regulating what we think we're regulating, and doing so in an educated way, rather than simply just making a knee-jerk or hasty reaction against things that we may not fully understand, based off our individual biases. So I like to make sure that, as we discuss this going forward, as far as exclusion zones and stuff like that, if you want to include, exclude industrial solar, we've pretty well already done, just by the makeup of the, at the township as it is right now. If we're going to talk about regulating solar, we're going to be talking about regulating solar projects lower than that, that's intermediate projects, and if the township decides to do that, that's all well and good, but I just want to make sure that we have some type of scale of understanding what the industrial solar is, what intermediate projects are, and what scale we're talking about under current technology by megawatt. People don't understand acreage versus megawatts, and that's just a part that is just not fully understood, I want to make sure everybody understands where those great points are. So when we have a discussion about this stuff, we're going so as a, as a point of radiating more light than radiating heat, as it were, or in this case, absorbing, so that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments tonight? All right, then we can move on over to our administrator, Ms. Nita Hanson, on her report.
Thank you. So let me begin with an apology. At our last meeting, I could not connect our livestream to YouTube. And during the meeting, while trying to do my part and trying to cover since Laura was out, I was busting with my phone, trying to connect to YouTube, and I inadvertently adjusted the camera view to only the ceiling fan. So I didn't realize that error until I was reviewing the recording to have it uploaded to YouTube once the meeting was complete. It was an error on my part that I hope to not repeat again, and I have been able to figure some things out with assistance from experts. So thankfully, the audio was unaffected, and so that's still available, but it's just going to, for the most part, show a shot of the ceiling fan. But it was a really good shot of the ceiling fan, so I'll take credit for that. Well, I hope one day to be perfect, that's not likely to happen this side of heaven, so in the meantime, I ask for grace and forgiveness. On a side note, our new copier is up and running, it seems to be working well. Reminder that the Township Community Day is coming up on Sunday, September the third, beginning at five P M. at Cumberland Trail Golf Club. It'll be a fun-filled day with family activities, including an area for the children with inflatables. There will be food trucks and live music, and the evening will end with a spectacular fireworks display. The township is fortunate to have a number of community sponsors. The Tascala Street Fair starts tomorrow and runs through August nineteenth. You may have already noticed that street closures and detours began today in order to route traffic around the fair. So if you need the additional information, you can visit the street fair website at I learned today about an organization that's called Neighborhood Bridges. Neighborhood Bridges was formed to respond to the growing rate of poverty in suburban and rural America. Its mission is to bridge communities with schools in providing basic needs, removing barriers, and seeking equity for students so they can engage and succeed in school and in life. They have what they call a campaign for kindness. You can go to their website, which is neighborhoodbridges.org, and find the listing for Tascala. They work with children in both Southwest Licking and Licking Heights schools. You can sign up to be included in their network to meet specific needs. For instance, the, a story was shared today about a boy who needed a pair of shoes, and so they send that out, whatever, if there's a specific need, they send it out, and somebody donated a pair of shoes, and this sixteen-year-old boy, when he was given these shoes, started to cry, because he'd never had a new pair of shoes. And he said, please thank whoever it was that donated these. What an amazing opportunity to just not get any credit, but help in a need that can be so meaningful to young people. Sheetz is planning its opening the last week of this month, so stay tuned for the exact day, but it's coming up. In order to promote cohesiveness and encouragement to each other, I would like to have an all-hands, what I'm calling an all-hands lunch, once every quarter. Everyone, our elected officials and employees, will be invited to attend the lunches. I'd like to suggest that the first lunch should be scheduled for Friday, September eighth, so that we can still get one in for the third quarter, and I ask the board to allocate up to a hundred and fifty dollars for each of these quarterly luncheons, and authorize me to schedule the luncheons, and then I will ensure that everyone is sent a calendar invite.
I would move to authorize a one fifty for the quarter, for all-hands lunch meeting. Is there a second?
One second.
Discussion?
I do have a question. You mentioned elected officials and employees, should we not include our zoning commission appointees, and so that we can, if it's about being cohesive, to include those members out of those boards also?
Well, you know, that's an interesting idea. I hadn't thought about broadening it out that far, I was thinking more of sort of our family, but if you want to include more, if we want to include more of all of our board appointees, I'm probably going to need more than I don't know.
Right, that's right.
So, but I mean, I don't have any objections to also opening it up to all of our board appointees.
Or even on an annual basis, or semi-annual basis, open it up to all, and maybe have some words employed, so it can have a little different dynamic at different times.
Yeah, I was just trying to kind of get things started in terms of not, so that, like, all of our road crew, but most of whom don't really have an opportunity to interact with you, they interact with me, but they don't get to interact with you, and so I still think, that was my thinking. But if you want me to open it up, include all of our board members, I'm, that's fine with me, I'm just going to be more of a budget.
Can we maybe do that on the initial, and then see if I'm adding, adding the others, like I said, on a semi-annual or annual basis, so not every meeting, but?
Yeah, works for me.
I just had a question.
Okay, sure.
These are meetings that be in the daytime?
Yes, at lunch.
So working hours?
Right.
So what's the possibility of those folks coming in to be with us, and then if it's, what's the chance of them coming?
Yeah.
And then my other second question would be, are we going to talk anything about policy procedures that is pertaining to employees of the township versus these are not employees? I'm just trying to understand it more.
Yeah, so thank you for that, for those two thoughts, and maybe if we sort of combine that with Mr. Evans' thought about opening into all of our committee appointees or our board appointees, maybe those meetings we could do like at dinner, or, you know, like at, not, I don't want to call it potluck, because I want people to come, but do it, you know, in an evening as opposed to lunchtime, because maybe it would include more of them. And these meeting, these luncheons, these quarterly luncheons, I'm not really seeing them as a let's-do-business kind of thing.
That's what I was at, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Just get to know each other.
Yeah.
So would we, would we be talking, so we would do the one in the morning with our, or the lunchtime with the, with the employees, but the board, you want to do something separate with the board members, you're saying, maybe in the evening? But most of the board, is that true, more, most of your board?
I was just going to suggest that I can ask them, because I'll be meeting with them the next month, so I can get a feel for what, whether they would attend in a certain time, if they would be at a certain time.
That would be great.
And I'd just like to say, as far as with the employees and elected officials, we could not discuss business unless we announce it as a public meeting, because that'd be a violation of open meetings act.
Correct.
So that's not even an option.
Correct.
Yeah.
So right now, we're just looking at doing it with the employees and the board members?
I mean, certainly if we needed to discuss, like, benefits or something like that, I mean, that would not need to be, you know, if there was a discussion, but that's not my vision. My vision in scheduling these meetings is just to get together, just to spend time together, right? I think that we, we don't take enough time to kind of appreciate each other, and celebrate, maybe whoever's had a birthday that quarter or something, you know, and just spend, that was my thought, just spend some time together, once a quarter, at lunchtime.
I was about, that started out with just the board, and the trustees.
Yeah, I'm just very, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Workups. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Correct, congratulations should go out to one of our road crew members, Terry Holtz, for earning the commercial applicator license, and actually, now that we've approved, I have a lunch in September, I'll use that lunchtime to sort of celebrate that accomplishment that, that he has. I'd like to give an update on our cruisers. Lieutenant Carson called it from the sheriff's office, he had good news and he had bad news. The bad news is that Ford cannot fulfill and has actually canceled the order for all the cruisers. The twenty that the sheriff's office was getting an R two. Lieutenant Carson immediately went to work to find alternatives. A Dodge Durango is a comparable vehicle, and in fact, the number of law enforcement agencies, including the Ohio State Highway Patrol, are switching to Durangos. Currently, he has a contact for production that is in the state of Pennsylvania, but he's checking to see if the commissioners will approve working with a dealership out of, outside of the state of Ohio. Right now, there's nothing for us to do. Once Lieutenant Carson knows the details with new bids and all of the new information, then he'll meet with us, and at that time, we'll have to determine to make a pending purchase orders for the current cruisers, and approve purchase orders for the new vehicles, because all of the component parts that have already been approved and purchase orders started are all model-specific, so all of those will have to be changed. But he does expect that the cost will be substantially the same.
Oh, good, that's good news.
He said maybe even slightly cheaper, but the difference, whether higher or lower, is expected to be diminished, just a small one. The zoning board has been working on revising the wording of our zoning resolution to address, amongst other things, the use of solar structures that are not otherwise controlled by Ohio law. In essence, these are the size and type of structures that are used for self-sustaining utility service to a property. The zoning board is working in light of the expectation of the new comprehensive plan, as well as with the prosecutor's office or specific language. They are also adding language prohibiting small solar facilities under fifty megawatts, and small wind facilities as permitted by Ohio law. So seems like everybody still has some work to do on, on that issue. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me, I have some of my business cards here, you can email me, you can call me, I'm here to help you with any questions you might have, and that's all.
Well, Ms. Hanson, I do have a question, you gave an update on the zoning commission. The use codes, they've gone through the use codes for quite some time, and they said they were completed. When are we going to have action on that? Because one of the concerns I have is the other fueling, which is other gas main stations, but a lot of people refer to other fueling, that allows semi-fueling in basically the large stretch of forty and three-ten, I believe anywhere in local business and general business, and one of those things was that sheet.
Well, Ms. Anderson, I do have a question. You gave an update on the zoning commission. The use codes, they've gone through the use code for quite some time and they said they were completed. When are we gonna have action on that? Because one of the concerns I have is the other fueling, which is other gas main stations, but a lot of people refer to other fueling that allows semi-fueling in basically the large stretch of forty and three-ten, I believe anywhere in local business and general business. And one of those things was that Sheetz gas station, where there's a lot of concerns about the proximity of semi-fueling and residences, just like the residential hotel that was in there. And that was not caught. And we had to take that out by itself. Aren't we not gonna move forward and try to pull that out from the use code so that we have some control over where we have semi-fueling?
I don't have the answer to your question, but it's something that I will look into and I can report back at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we can go ahead and move over into our new business. Under Board and Zoning Appeals, I move to accept Greg Rice's resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term of January first, twenty twenty-one, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A discussion?
When did he originally put this in? Because I saw it was on the agenda, but the resignation statement. I was just curious when we were notified.
Well, he made us aware that his house, that he was moving out of the township, but he literally emailed me that today when I could ask him for it. But I needed it. I needed it in writing officially before we could replace it this night. Thank you. It came in as soon as I sent it.
Great, thanks.
Okay. You're welcome.
I'll roll call.
Mr. Johnson or Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to appoint Kevin Newton to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the unexpired term ending in twelve, which is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Again, we're appointing members without advertisement, without interview. We even had a resident today saying he would be willing to serve. And we're going against this for handpicked individuals. This, this person just put their resignation in and Ms. McKee already has a replacement. That, that's not right. We should open up this to the residents, advertise. There, there's no immediate need to have this filled. So why, why wouldn't we open this up to all the residents? Get applications, actually interview, and then select this as a board, not as a single member? That, that's what's wrong about this administration and, and the way we're, we're operating this township. There's no transparency and no cooperation with the residents. I think there's plenty of people that could serve out there. We should give them an opportunity.
And this person gets the opportunity, are a resident at the township?
I don't know. I don't know anything about this person. There's been no, no application, no resume, no information, not even a name. You're, you're, you're not here to appoint a member, you already had the member selected. That's just wrong, is what I'm saying. And I make a motion to table this in order to advertise and interview the position as it should be. So that's my motion.
So the tape, it dropped for?
You have to ask for some.
Is there a second? Due to lack of second, the motion has died. Mrs. Behring, please roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, we'll move over into old business. I move to authorize a check to Hamburg Fireworks Display Inc. to be cut and signed outside of the meeting and to authorize a two percent late fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I don't understand the purpose of this because we already approved this. We already approved the costs. We approved the contract that includes a two percent late fee, but I'm not sure, I don't think there's gonna be a late fee because our fiscal officer actually requested the proper paperwork of a signed contract, which was never given to her, and an invoice. I believe she has that in part. There's some parts not filled out, but she has both checks ready to pay today. So I don't, I don't understand the purpose of this.
Okay, there you go. Speaking outside, Mrs. Behring can speak for herself, Mr. Evans. But I'll let Mrs. Johnson.
This is my concern, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I thought I explained it, but maybe I, maybe I didn't do it very well. The only reason that we need to appropriate the two percent late fee, which I do not expect we will ever have to pay, is because it is included in the contract, what was not appropriated at the last meeting. The only amount that was appropriated was the fifteen thousand, the actual payment. But we were hoping that the two percent would be removed from the contract, but they declined to do that. So the money had to be appropriated and set aside in the event it would be needed, even though it's not going to be needed.
Right.
And so I'm just following the advice of our council to have the board appropriate the two percent late fee without regard to the fact that it is probably never gonna be used.
Thank you.
And the two checks?
Yeah.
It's not a two percent, it's like half of the fifteen, right? And then the other one's the other half of the fifteen?
The two checks have nothing to do with the two percent.
That's, I wanna make sure of that.
They're just, the two checks are for the fifteen thousand for the actual payment.
Right.
Yes.
As, as long as Ms. Behring's provided the information needed to make the payment, there's gonna, isn't gonna be a late fee?
Perfect.
Is this gonna be a process going forward, including late fees with contracts and having the purpose of it to include the late fees? Because that's not something we typically do.
Well, so in the contracts that I have been involved with and working with the prosecutor's office, late fees have been removed from contracts and are now, are not part of the contracts. Like for the new cop, what, copyrighted and how it was weird, because it's a lease. But like for instance, maybe like the security. Oh, that's what I meant. We paid, that's what I mean. We paid it outright. Like the security system, for instance. It included a late fee, which was recommended that it be removed, and they agreed to do that. So there was no need to appropriate it because it was removed from the contract. In this instance, they were, they declined to remove the late fee. And so it was approved from a legal standpoint so long as the late fee was appropriated.
And that was coming from the prosecutor's office. That's why she did it. So, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Behring?
I have a second.
Oh, you have a second?
Jeff's seconded it.
Jeff's seconded.
Okay. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to accept the in-kind donation of twenty-five hundred dollars from Uline to purchase seven picnic tables and two hundred reusable bags. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, what's the purpose of this?
Okay.
I mean, the only thing I got was a picture of a picnic table and a bag.
Okay, so Uline has made a donation to the township in support of our community day. They made a cash donation, or are making it, have committed to a cash donation. But they also made a donation, an in-kind donation of up to twenty-five hundred dollars for any of the products they have in their catalog. So the reusable bags will give us an opportunity to have a handout for the people who are in attendance. And the picnic tables are, they completely fold flat after they're, after, when they're not being used. So we'll be able to move them from place to place. And so if we get two hundred of the reusable bags and seven picnic tables, that will spend the twenty-five hundred dollar in-kind donation from Uline.
And the good news about those tables, we can use them over at the fireworks. So when we have the food trucks, we can use them there. And once we're finished with them there, we can push them, put them back over in our garage and use them next year, maybe if we decide to have our movie night again or any other event that we may have out in the park. And also at our future park of a hundred and twenty acres. So it's a good use. And there, it's a recycle, recyclable tables and really, really nice picnic tables.
Yeah, they're good. I've got three of them. They're good.
Oh, good. Yeah, they're really nice.
Well, it's not costing us anything, so.
Right.
And just so you guys know, it's donated. It's donated from Uline. Uline is a company that's come, that's come to add in the township. So it's a donation from them. So I thought that was a really good thing for them to do in the township. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to accept the nine hundred dollars for the van and three hundred dollars for the printing of the township logo on the reusable bags. Is there a second?
From Sheets.
And from, from Sheets, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm so sorry to mention Sheets. Sheets donated the nine hundred dollars plus additional three hundred dollars. So that's the total of twelve hundred dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, this is good.
So Sheets, the, the projected cost for printing the township logo on the reusable bags is three hundred dollars, which Sheets has made a commitment to donate that cost. And the township's portion of the cost for the van is nine hundred dollars, and Sheets has committed to donate that. And so this is an expenditure of their twelve hundred dollar donation for those two items.
I mean, this is good, but I would ask that for the meeting prep, that this guy, you have this kind of information, let this be provided to all members of the board prior. I mean, and this and all other.
This was not, never provided to you, Mr. Evans?
With the printed, I've got the picture of, of a table and just a picture of a bag.
Okay, that's fine.
There's nothing, there's nothing else.
I mean, our logo, I don't have.
All I'm saying is that they're covering the van, they're covering, this is just general information that transferred to anything. It's just good to have as a board member so we can make these meetings go quicker and that. So not contentious on this one, but just information is, is good.
Okay. Roll call, Ms. Behring?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, I'll move over into the road bids. I'll turn that over to Mr. Evans, please.
Uh, no.
Road?
I'm sorry.
That's for Nita.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hanson.
I'll take it back over.
No, that's okay. I move to authorize Township Administrator Nita Hanson to open and read the road bids on September first at twelve o'clock and zero eight seconds.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, was Heritage Drive separated?
It was.
So see?
Well, Palmer Road was separated and the other two were together.
And both of those are within the same JED districts?
Right.
Can you forward the, those new figures?
Oh, sure.
Does that, does that not seem that or anything?
Sure.
And then have you determined if there was any verbal balance in the JED DIA accounts that would go towards this? I know you're receiving reimbursement from them.
Yeah, the meeting is a week from Friday.
Roll call, Ms. Behring?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, Road Drive, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Evans regarding Road Drive.
Okay, this was last discussed, I think, July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, where Mr. Bobo attended with his wife and asked that the student board, we had a discussion, and I said that I'd ask for an agenda item and bring information. I did that, I provided the board information on the twenty-eighth of July, asking for the agenda item on the next meeting in August. That was denied. So we're here now, we have the same information. And what I would like to ask the board is, are we moving forward with this? And the main thing, as I've talked to the residents, is are we on agreement about what the cost would be? Who's sharing the cost? Are we doing market value? Are we doing what they were promised? The rates that I provided in the spreadsheet last year, I computated based on what Mr. Bobo said he was told his parcel would cost. So I extrapolated from there. I also did some rough lot splits just based on the, the size of the existing ones and wanted to see if the board, again, is in agreement that we can move forward on this basic premise and then get the signatures. Because I think getting the signatures before anything's determined is a little premature, kind of like shopping for a house, you didn't even put an offer on. So we, we need to determine if this is feasible, if it's gonna be basically agreeable to both parties. Because I think if it's market price, I don't think a lot of homeowners are interested. But the way they were told before is if they cover the cost, the legal costs, to get it transferred, they're amenable to that. So what's the board's pleasure? Or basically, do you want to move forward with this?
Well, I did a little bit of research because I hadn't been involved in any of this before. And so I wanted to look back and see, you know, what was happening. And so I looked at the minutes from July nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, which specifically state trustee Evans volunteered to collect the signatures. And that's when you asked for it to be added as an item for, to the agenda for discussion. And at the next meeting on August the second, the, the board trustee McKee feels that the township needs signatures before moving forward. Trustee Evans feels discussion needs done with the residents regarding the cost. But it seemed clear from the research that I did that it looks like that the ball was in your court to get the signatures of fifty plus one before going forward.
Now, and that's again, the discrepancy between the minutes. And if you watch, and I watched the videos again, that is not the case. And I said, again, this is like buying furniture before you even made an offer on the house. You, you've gotta make sure, again, is it, it, it's, it's very simple and it, it should be a yes or no. Are the other board members willing to move forward in F what? The market price or the price that Mr. Carlyle had indicated to, to them per the residents before? I couldn't find any information about any amounts, any, any way they were gonna do about that. And that's why I said our records just are, we can't find any. And I don't know why. Because there was a meeting, I think, on, was it May of two thousand nineteen? May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, where they were collecting signatures. So I don't know why we don't have information of what the intentions were as far as price. Because I'm, I'm basing it off what the residents say. So I want to know, is the board comfortable with that? Because again, if we're, if we're going market price, I don't think they want to pay market price for the land.
Well, it seems like if it was a project that started in two thousand nineteen and they couldn't get enough signatures, and then there haven't been this required signatures gathered until now, and it's, it seems like, you know, maybe there's not the ability to get fifty plus one signatures.
They had, they had, they had one meeting and then I was told they were gonna, you guys were, they're, the township was just gonna go out and get the other signatures and it didn't happen because of COVID. But after COVID, nothing was done. But regardless of what happened in the past.
Like the, the work that's being done on the comprehensive plan and the green space and that type of thing that are being considered by the comprehensive plan committee, it may be that this is something that we should do more work on and determine whether or not the comprehensive plan has some obstruction with regards to how this land should be treated.
Well, I just want to say that the prosecutor's office was involved in this before. And we, we're not saying we're not wanting to sell the land or move forward. The thing is, under, the prosecutor advised us, not just under this board, but the previous board, is to get the fifty plus one signatures. Once you get those, we can move forward. Unless we get those, we have nowhere to go. Mrs. Brown, if you want to speak, because she was involved at the first part of it, when the first thing, I'm not against.
You are correct. And we got stopped because of COVID. We didn't get a chance. We did the one meeting. We didn't get enough signatures in the one meeting. We were gonna go out and get more signatures and because of COVID, we weren't able to do that. And my. And my understanding is it's all keyed on whether we get the fifty plus one signatures. We offered enough that people could come here, and we would get their signatures, and it just didn't work out.
They never showed up. Maybe, how many?
Well, COVID, and then we just, it just all shut down because of COVID. And then the prosecutor's office recommended we start over from scratch.
Correct.
And I thought that Mr. Evans had took it over, and he was going to take care of it, with the understanding that you and Jeff wanted the fifty plus one signature.
Right, and according to our minutes, it does say, Mr. Evans, we get the fifty plus one percent signatures. Once we get that, then we can move forward. We're not against this. It's, we have to do it this way. There's no other way around. This is coming from the prosecutor's office.
I thought Mark said he could sit at the entrance and get signatures all day long. Isn't that what he said in the one meeting? Mr. Evans, that's what you said.
Again, you go by the minutes, but if you look, please excuse me, if you go by the minutes and then look at the actual video, there's a huge disparity. Now, even what the administrator just said, she walked it back of, well, with the comprehensive plan, maybe we might want to do something different. And what I'm saying is, this board, I don't understand why you can't just state your opinion and make a fact of, yes, I want to move forward, and these are the parameters.
Yes, we will move forward, and the parameter is that you give the fifty percent, what, fifty percent?
No, no, no.
Signature plus the one. That's the prosecutor. That's who represents us.
I sent you what?
Make a motion that says what you as a board want. Make a motion that you'll move forward after.
Ms. Brown, I sent the board on July twenty-eighth, the proposed lot split and the pricing. And I provided it again. Is that what the board is comfortable with?
Mr. Evans, please, I've asked you, get the signatures, coming from the prosecutor's office, fifty percent plus the one percent. Then we can move forward. We're not saying we're not going to move forward, but we have to do it the right way. And the right way is from the prosecutor's office, just to get those fifty plus one percent. Because if you don't get them, it's mute. That means it won't move forward.
It's mute if the board doesn't want to move forward, and just as the administrator stated, maybe we don't want to do that right now, but the concept, and what I'm saying is, this board should be able to commit. Are we doing it? Are we not? And are these the parameters? So I will make a motion that we, that we move forward, which I, I don't, no, I won't, because I don't think we should be tied to this without some kind of discussion. Well, no, because you can amend it. So I'll make a motion to move forward with the prices and lot splits as presented, in which then the fifty-one percent of signatures will be obtained with a notary provided by the township.
The township does not have a notary.
Who's the notary?
The township does not have a notary.
We need a notary, so we have to, that's why I'm saying, there's going to be an expense. So if we're not moving forward, if we can't agree on this, why move forward with any expense? So that's my motion of moving forward with this as presented, and we can make change if we have discussions, you guys have had this for a year, with the authorization to hire a notary to obtain the fifty-one percent signatures and authorize Mark Evans to, to move ahead with this. That's my motion. So it encompasses everything.
Is there a second? Wait a minute, you guys, hold on. We're not saying, we're doing it the way the prosecutor's doing it. We're not. No, here's the thing. Here's the thing. We are going by the prosecutor, okay? And the prosecutor is saying that we have to get, there's nothing different from the last board as far as what the prosecutor had set up at the fifty percent plus the one percent. We're not against it.
There's a motion.
We just, again, I'm explaining because of this threat about reelection. That's, that's not right. That's not.
A second.
Yeah, okay, so.
I'm requesting, I make a motion to release all the communications with the prosecutor regarding Rural Drive to the public. Because if I did it, I'd be accused of breaking term of client privilege, and so I want to be able to provide the residents with a copy of those communications. That's my motion.
Well, that's a good motion. We can, I can second that motion.
Okay.
To release that information.
All right.
I'm still thoroughly confused before. It was supposed to be presented, there's some kind of presentation out, that they're supposed to collect signatures in order to sell this property to people, or give to these people or whatever, right? So I didn't know we had to have the terms. Do we have to have the terms before we take that out? Does the terms have to be on that, what everybody's paying for? Who's buying it? How much they're buying? Is that all have to be on the, when they go around for the signatures?
Right, because the thing about, if you don't get the signature, it's muted. It doesn't matter.
But you have to have all that data on that petition when you go around.
I don't have the folder.
My understanding, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, the reason they have to have the signatures is because the property is owned by basically their kind of association and jardine manor. So you have to have the signatures, which is going to release the property out of that, to where it can be, the restrictions on that property can be released, so the township can sell it, in a sense, and make it a residential property.
So as a.
That's why you have to have.
Terms and conditions, right? We don't have to have this.
No, it's just basically a statement that John Carlisle had a meeting in here with the residents, and we got all the ones that came that were willing to sign it, to sign it. And it's basically, it's a twofold. You have to release this stuff on the property before you guys can even talk about it.
Right, exactly. That's the one.
And that's why the prosecutor's office said, get the signatures first, because then you also have to have it released through somebody to represent their age away, if I'm remembering stuff off the top of my head. So it's not an easy process where you guys can just determine the price of the land and sell it. You have to have it released from those covenants in a way before the township can do anything with it.
Exactly, that's what I'm.
And that's why you got to get the signatures.
Yeah, we're not against this, sir. Gentlemen, we're not against it. We are not at all. Just so you guys know, we are not.
Information from the prosecutor's office.
We just have to do it the right way, so it can happen. We're not against it. I'm not against it, I should say for me. So I'm saying, Mr. Evans is not against it.
I'm not against it. I've been trying to get this property for thirty years.
Oh, okay.
Let me just, let me just say, let me say one thing.
Can I add something to the signatures, okay? I understand what you're saying, and I'm not part of it about what you're saying. But all I'm saying is, is that John Carlisle set this up, and he presented it to us with the, with the lands, with the landmark out, the landmark out, what he was going to get. He presented, he told us how much it was going to cost us. We come to a meeting, and they start collecting.
Where's that information?
Now, you're saying.
I shared it with you, Mark, back then.
We can figure out how much property there is and how much it's going to cost.
I don't have anything in writing on the amount of money they were going to give you for the properties, but I have the folder where we sat here in a meeting, and residents came in and signed the paper, but the prosecutor's office said, due to COVID, it's been too long, you have to start over. And then Mr. Evans was supposed to take care of giving the signatures.
Okay, again, this is, these are two separate things. So getting the signatures is deep restriction of that, because it was given to the township under these provisions, so we got to release those. But there's no use going forward with that. If we don't have even a basic yes, that we're going to do this for, we don't have to say the price of, is it going to be market price? Or it's going to be the price they were told, which you see here, and I presented, is that, so they know what they're going, they might not want to go forward, so then why are we going to do it? It's just basic business counter sense.
Again, Mr. Evans, I'm not going to go around the prosecutor. I'm not an attorney. They're looking out for the township. If we get the signatures, we can move forward. We're not against this, but we're going to do it the way the prosecutor advised us to do.
In which way? At market price or at these prices?
I don't know that. I can't answer that.
Why, why the township want to buy this property?
I'm sorry?
Why is the township wanting to buy this?
We own it. They want to sell it.
We own it. We're trying to sell it.
And Mr. Johnson.
It was donated to us for a dollar upon the commissioners many years ago.
Mr. Johnson, to answer your question, this that provided last year was the breakout based on Mr. Bobo's indication that his property, they said, was thirteen hundred dollars. So based on that size and extrapolating it to the others is what I came up with everything else. So I don't know if these are the numbers, but I don't know why we wouldn't have those numbers in that map from before. Because, Mr. Johnson, you were involved in all this, so I would think you would know.
We're just waiting for the signatures collected from the residents. There's no case to do.
What I'm saying, are you comfortable with this, or is it supposed to be more?
No, my point is, they got to walk around and say, okay, we're getting all this property, we're getting for this. They're trying to get signatures locked.
This is separate. This is separate. Signatures, you don't have to have this. What I'm saying, to go forward, do you want this or ten times this, or a hundred times this? Because this isn't market value.
I never said anything about that much.
That's what I'm trying to.
The thing is, when they get this around, they don't take this around.
They're not taking this around. They're not taking.
So they don't want to take this around. They want to basically take something around and get the signatures and say, are we willing to forfeit our rights to that property? That's all you need. That's all you need. The only thing is fifty percent plus one.
But others can't, others can't buy it.
So like, we know, like, our own would probably, obviously, there too. So then, is, like, is there a way for us to have a statement written up? And then, like, I know, you know, on a team where we could maybe walk with them, and we, we say we all.
We, whatever way you want to do it. Yeah, you got a notary with you, whatever way you guys want to do it. We are not against it. They can get those signatures.
Actually, I think there was actually John Carlisle had a form that was already written, the whole thing, and all of this.
Again, you guys, again, you guys, it's all ready to go. All you have to do is update the date, and someone go get the signatures.
Do you have that?
It's a sheet that's basically releasing the covenants, in a sense, of that property. They were already, they already signed, and it just needs the dates updated, and somebody has to go get notarized signatures for fifty plus one. It's like a fifty percent, I think it's a percentage.
That's what, I'm trying to get them to pay for it.
It's a fifty percent, but it's fifty percent of the homes over there plus one.
Does every signature have to be notarized?
Every signature has to be notarized.
Now, Mr. Carlisle will be that he's going to provide a shopping park for her to go around.
And then when COVID hit, it didn't happen.
So if you're a notary, why can't you do it now?
Because I'm not going to spend all day with trustee Evans, because of the way he treats me.
Oh, my God. I'll stay home.
You said you could sit over there, you could get a mark, you committed to doing it, and that's when I got pulled out of the equation.
I could hear that too, but I'll take you around.
Like I said, we didn't know he wasn't going to do it. He committed it in the meeting minutes. Mr. Evans committed to doing this.
Watch the video.
Mr. Evans, I don't have to watch your video. I know what you said. I can put a tent up and get signatures all day long. I did it when I did the petition for both. I know what you said.
So I think we have it solved. Mr. Bobo will go around with Laura.
No, Laura did not say she would go with Mr. Bobo. Trustee Evans said he would handle it.
Do you see a notary? Because that's the law. Do you see a notary?
So here.
So, Mr. Evans, are you saying that you're not going to permit it?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
You already have a motion with a second on the floor.
In regards to that.
You already have a motion with a second on the floor.
Okay, you have a motion right now with a second. You want to get roll call for the, for the information from the.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
It's a motion. I think you need to check with the prosecutor personally, because I don't know what information.
All right, I've got another motion. We'll separate, no, sorry. I've got a motion on the floor to authorize trustee Evans to hire a notary to go around and assist in this endeavor, working with the prosecutor.
How much?
How much?
I don't know what notaries cost.
Five-dollar notary. You can all charge so much.
You're going to have a notary with you.
Why don't you just, Jackie said she'd help me. Just turn it back over to me and Jackie, and let me help these guys out. I know he said he was going to do it, but that's a new point. Just let me work with the residents and get it done.
How much you get it?
I make a motion for Laura Brown, our executive secretary. Oh, yeah, that one dies for that one. So I make a motion for our executive secretary, Laura Brown, which is a certified notary. And she would work with a resident by the name of Jackie Katz, that is also a notary, that will help with Mr. Bobo and his community over Rural Drive. So is there a second to get the fifty plus one percent signatures?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I would just have to correct, that's a Jackie Catuno.
Oh, Jackie Catuno? Okay, sorry, for the record. Roll call, Ms. Mary?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
There we go.
And I'll move over into the solar wind farms. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Evans, please.
All right, hold on, let me get this. All right, solar exclusion, we've discussed this for over a year. We need to move forward. There's talk about excluding the under fifty, and it doesn't make sense not to exclude the over fifty. Again, met with the commissioners, and they are fully supportive, and if we pass this, then they'll take it up. So I move to approve resolution number two-three-zero-eight-one-five-zero, it's the first one, right? One. In the matter of approving resolution request, the Lincoln County Commissioners declare portions of the unincorporated area of Edna Township, Lincoln County, Ohio, to be restricted areas for the construction of economically significant wind farms, large wind farms and large solar facilities. Is there a second?
I'll second. Discussion? Discussion? I'll go first then. I just think that we still have work to do. And I'm not ready to, I think we should keep it tabled. And the reason why I'm saying this is because of the fact that our comp plan is not quite ready. It's not going to be ready till the end of middle September, is what I'm hearing, something like that, or end of September. So I'm not ready to move on it, so I think we have some work to do. So I think we should table it until we continue to do some more work.
Well, I think that would be a mistake. Our consultant for the comp plan was for this exclusionary zone. And contrary to what some state, this was provided by, I believe, Dave Olson through the zoning commission. And this is in Fairfield County. There's not one single two-hundred-and-fifty-acre lot. It's joined through to make a large area, and there's a lot of land that can be done that way, too. I believe there's one in Liberty Township. And as Dale Arnold indicated, farmers have been approached between three and eleven solar developers, trying to get them released. So there is a push, so I think we need to get ahead, because once they file, it's out of our hands, I mean, it's in commissioners' hands, but this sends a message, and I don't see how we're going to limit or exclude the proposal that I saw go with prosecutor of everything under fifty, except what's for residential use, and not deal with over fifty. It's a mistake, and we've been dealing with this for, I think, a year and a half. I mean, August second of two thousand twenty-two, here in the minutes, we discussed exclusionary zones. It's wait, 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 and we're just going to be caught off guard. And again, commissioners are ready and willing to take this up if we provide it to them. We hear things like, nobody will ever consider this area for industrial solar, if nobody's. If nobody's gonna, there's no harm. But we know people are, and again, it doesn't have to be one large two-hundred-and-fifty acre lot. They string them together, so I think it would be a mistake to delay any further.
I think that what the commissioners have said is that they would give some consideration, but they are not, have not been committed to moving it forward to any kind of a public process.
That's.
So they, well, I guess I could read from their letter. This is from the Commissioner's letter to me dated July twentieth of two thousand twenty-three. To be clear, in your role as township administrator, you were absolutely correct in your reading an interpretation of our letter, which I was accused of mischaracterizing their letter. And what they have said is, while we would give due consideration to a request from a board of township trustees, it is certainly not a given that we would move forward with that public process regarding exclusion zones. And I think another thing that's important to consider is whether we would want the entirety of the township to be declared an exclusionary zone, or if based on the comprehensive plan that we are expecting, if there are certain parts of, parts and parcels of the township, which, when I spoke to Dale.
Arnold.
Oh, thank you, I was gonna say Dale Evans, and I knew that wasn't right. When I spoke to Dale Arnold, he said that it's completely appropriate to designate only parts and parcel. So I would just point those two things.
I just wanted to say that I've, I've met with the commissioners, and that is not what they stated. Now, every time I meet, there is communication from the township to them, and then there's a letter. But I can tell you emphatically, that's not what they stated. And even if they were, if they refused to take this up, if, we're here to protect our residents and determine our destiny, not the county. So you go ahead with what's right, and then you deal with that. So again, we need to protect this township. And even you say wait for the comprehensive plan, the consultant already weighed in on this and said that he agrees with exclusionary zone, that's not best, or even close to the best news, and if you read, if you read the letter, everybody talks to me.
We should check it, we should try to, how do I say that, we should zone it certain ways, and have our zoning books and so forth. That's where I got out of it.
There's a letter.
I will make a motion to take the.
For the resolution.
Oh, yeah.
So roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. McGee?
No. So I will make a motion to just table it, when we make a vote about it.
Well, die.
Okay, so that's what I want to do, okay. Council, turn the meeting over to Mark Evans regarding the special duty.
Uh, yes, this was brought up to me, and I was kind of concerned about this before. It was approved unanimously on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The Newark Advocate even had an article that at Etten Township to have sheriff's deputy and all trustees meeting. Um, that's five months ago, ten meetings, without a special duty deputy. I reached out to Lieutenant Carson, who said Captain Ford, who's in charge of the special duties, indicated it's set up, but no one ever requested. Um, it was approved, and I want to know why it wasn't requested, because we still do not have a security system installed in this township building. And there's a concern of many about their safety, about false allegations made. And. It's set up and running?
Yeah, when you open the door, the security guard goes off.
No, video, video security.
Video recording, you don't have a video recorder, that's true.
Because it was removed.
It's not secure, it's a video recorder.
And it, it was voted back in January this year to be reinstalled, and it still isn't. So I don't know why it is purposely being withheld, but for the safety of everybody, because this is what I use for inspections, and what I have to use in safety from those false allegations, because there are no security cameras. I don't care. So, but Ms. McGee, you initiated that there's a special duty deputy here, and I just want to know why there isn't.
Okay, thanks for asking that, Mr. Evans, I greatly appreciate you asking. When we set up a special duty officer to be at these meetings, there was a threat. One of our employees was assaulted, and there was a, um.
You want to state that number?
Well, like I said, there was, there was a report done, and there was a, they put, they had a restraining order in place for several months, and people felt scared, they felt threatened as we came to these meetings. And as we move on, months and months later, I don't think anybody feels, do you feel any threats right now, as far as safety, anybody?
Was that because it was false allegation?
Mr. Evans? I think you understand that the reason that the temporary restraining order could not be converted or heard for a permanent restraining order is because it resulted from a non-domestic situation.
No, that's not the case.
And in a non-domestic situation, it requires two events in order for a hearing to be conducted to convert a temporary restraining order to a permanent restraining order.
Ms. Hanson, those false allegations, my video proved that. The prosecutor did not, but what I'm concerned about is this board makes motions and then resolutions and doesn't follow through. And Ms. McGee, on her own, decides not to do them.
Well, I want to.
If we voted for it, and I even voted for this, because there are others that are still concerned. I'm still concerned about false allegations and that. And here, why, put the security system back in here, and I think everybody will be a little bit more.
Again, Mr. Evans, we don't feel the need to pay for an extra deputy in here for our safety right now.
And we have to.
People feel a little comfortable right now. Back then, there was some physical altercations that happened.
Against myself.
Well, they say, I don't know, I guess, if you want to say it, your name wasn't mentioned, against an employee here. So we did, we felt at that time, we needed something in place for our protection. Right now, nobody feels that threat.
They do.
Oh, really, can you tell me who?
They do.
Who are they?
Looking on his Facebook, he's always there.
Oh, okay.
Now, my, my point is, this board voted to have something enacted, and one person.
I'm not gonna waste the township's money, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm here to make sure we don't waste the township's money.
Not just one person deciding not to do it, just like the security.
We don't always, we don't want to spend all the money that we're allowed either, meaning a thousand dollars for hiring a local person, and they have to spend it, they were required some of it.
This was a motion to have one present at every meeting. I, I, I'm just saying that, can we please have the security cameras reinstalled in the hall? It's been since January.
Everybody has cell phones, if you want to record, you, you have your cell phone, if something happens, so. Here we are, public records requests, my administrator spends hours, 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 hours doing, filling up public records requests on video camera, and it's only coming from two people. Okay, two people, Mr. Burkholder and Mr. Evans.
And they're not being fulfilled.
Responses are given to each request. Legal responses are given to each request.
So we'll move on over to the PMG invoice, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Evans.
Yes, I saw that there was some discussion about this invoice that came in for fifteen hundred dollars. The approval was only last year for the annual services between July eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and July eighth of two thousand twenty-three. There was an invoice that came in for fifteen hundred dollars that was, appears to be approved outside of that. I'm not sure if Ms. McGee or Ms. Hanson did that, they were working with the pavement management group. But on page five of the proposal, it indicates PMG will provide a proposal for continued management services for an additional year thirty days before the expiration. So that further shows that it's not part of the original approval, and I was the one that did it. So I, I don't know if, if we're not continuing to use the services, if we're just gonna drive around and determine ourselves why we're paying that amount. But even if we're paid that amount, it should be a board, board vote to do that before it's expired.
Um, Mr. Evans, Ms. Varian emailed you at least twice, that said no one had asked her specifically to pay the bill. The invoice was presented by the vendor, and it was forwarded. And when the services were originally approved and appropriated by the board on April fifth of two thousand twenty-two, the appropriation was for fifteen thousand dollars, which was the thirteen-five plus the fifteen hundred for the second year. The minutes reflect fifteen thousand dollars for two years for seven, for seventy-five hundred dollars to have an actual pavement management service dealing with the roads. If the board does not want to approve payment of the invoice, I assume that it's within your where it all to not approve it.
No.
But no one has, no one has pre-approved this bill. It was received and it was forwarded to the fiscal officer.
Okay, what I'm saying is, when we approved it, it was approving the proposal, which is clearly stated on page one, which is in the back, that thirteen thousand five hundred. The fifteen thousand dollars was a mention if we did the two years, but we also mentioned that every other year, we could have the roads reevaluated, and, but that wasn't part of the proposal. Again, if you watched the video, which I did, versus the minutes, it's different. This proposal only covers that. And on page five, we didn't know that it was going to be done with fifteen hundred, because they were gonna send a proposal for the cost for that second year. So it wasn't stated as fifteen hundred. I'm just saying that we, we should be mindful of the contracts and what's approved, and not have any of this unapproved spending on this. This should be a simple matter that just comes to board, do we want to continue it or not? And go forward, not just say yes, because I know you guys were dealing with them. And I would assume this was brought up at that time, with the additional managed services. If not, like I said, it was in, in the contract here, and it should have been dealt with, I was removed from that. So that's my concern, that we're just paying for things without approval.
Well, it's my question that, as far as I can remember, I don't think they go looking at or anything else, that we did it with full fifteen thousand dollars, and it was based on a two-year thing, and you have to.
If you watch, you can watch the video.
Well, the purchase forms were thirteen-five, and that's what wasn't true. I don't remember fifteen hundred. I don't, it wasn't fifteen thousand, it was thirteen-five, and I don't have an extra fifteen hundred, so that's why I brought it. That's why I was looking for. And I paid them with thirteen thousand five hundred.
Thirteen hundred, probably fifteen thousand for a two-year thing.
I don't know that I only went for thirteen thousand.
In our discussion. We discussed that if we did it for two years, it might be fifteen, then we could have them redo the road evaluation every two years, but the proposal was only thirteen-five, because again, it, fifteen hundred wasn't the determined amount for the second year, they were gonna provide a proposal for that. It could have went up.
I think we have to pay this annual management fee in order to, in order to this agreement.
That is part of the, the first year, which is, starts at the wrap-up and closing, which is July eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and it goes to July eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And per page five, the second year of the managed services would be provided, because it could be different than the fifteen hundred, but what was approved was only the thirteen-five. So it's very simple, all this board needs to do is act and say, yes, we're gonna continue with that, but that should have been done before the expiration of that, and we receive a bill.
Well, I would just point out that the invoice was first received May seventeenth. So it could have been acted on before the expiration.
That's what I'm saying, it wasn't acted on. Why, I was taken off it.
When I received the invoice on May seventeenth, I forwarded the invoice to the fiscal officer. This is the first time that it's been brought up. If the board wants to act, there needs to be a motion.
Right, but the fiscal officer isn't, it's not her duty to go through the contracts and say all this and that. She's supposed to say, the board presents her, pay this invoice, do that. It is up to us to manage this, and it should have been up to, you were, Mr. Johnson, to say, okay, per the contract, are we continuing this, are we to bring it up to board? That's my assertion, it should have been dealt with back in May, not now after the fact. We're, we're getting a lot of then and nows. And it's not your fault, Ms. Varian, because again.
I, I wrote the purchase order for thirteen thousand five hundred, and that's what we paid it. And we paid them the first year of the fifteen hundred dollar management fee back at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. So I guess what it was answered is, are we gonna continue, do we want to pay them that fifteen hundred for two thousand twenty-three? It's twenty minutes or not, because I think we could argue that we don't need to pay that fifteen hundred, because we never really agreed to that.
I thought, I thought we can do it.
The only, the only thing with that is, are we gonna continue using their services? Because that annual management fee is what keeps the maps active, the, all that, within their software. And if you're not gonna have them reevaluating the roads again, there's no need to do that. I, I think it's a good idea to have the roads professionally evaluated, I mean.
Well, that was one of the questions I had, I mean, in the previous board, and the road crew that they used this, no, they didn't. We asked, I remember asking Bubba, how did he evaluate the roads, and it's never been a problem. I remember this conversation, do, do we need this service? So I remember saying that you would, you would pay this additional annual fee, I remember it. And I asked Bubba, said, hey, how were you doing in the previous years? He would just do ride, drive the roads, and he would do it by his own site, and it's never been a problem.
Do you have a hard copy of this report?
Um, there was that one with all the.
There's a lot of reports and a lot of, you, there's an active, I, I posted it, residents can go on the that site and actually see the condition of the road, when it was, I mean, it's a good analytical tool to really hone in on the maintenance and condition of the roads. I mean, it's always good to evaluate firsthand, but this puts in a quantitative report that you can look at and evaluate, and it gives, gives you the numbers, gives you.
Are you using this at all, have you used this? Do you think you'll use it?
I remember last year asking about it, and I said, why are we spending that money, too? He's done a good job, he's done a wonderful job, the roads are being taken care of.
I used it. Which roads got paved, and what, what the, what the future paving would be to evaluate the degradation of the roads, you know, if some are, are going quicker than expected, what type of, does they analyze what type of damage it is? Is it based on overweight, is it based on, there's different factors that you get out of it. I mean, I think it's a difference between just a doctor looking at you versus throwing you an MRI. You're getting more data, you're getting more useful information. But it's to the board's favor.
So, we have a motion out there to see if we want to continue the annual fee to use this company? That's it? Everything else, you have to say, Ms. Hanson.
We obligated to this, now that we're past the seven, eight, and we're into the other period?
I, I haven't received anything from them since that they sent that invoice on me, so. I, I haven't received anything from them since that they sent that invoice on May seventeen. I've received nothing. Let me say, let me correct that because I think I did get just a follow-up in July, just, you know, following up about it.
About the road service.
I mean, if you're not going to use it, why are we paying for it? But if we're going to go back to using it, is there a detriment of not keeping that data and they're going to have to remap everything? And where if we have the roads reevaluated in year two or year three, instead of that thirteen-five, would it be seven eight? Because they're not doing that initial, where are the roads, where are the size? They're just doing the, the video and the analysis.
Right, because the video that's available on the website is the video that they took a year ago. It's not updated. This fifteen hundred will update that, as I understand it, will not update that. It just gives you continued access to all of the data that is on.
So, Mr. Evans, when you were mentioning this, um, just curious to know if, if we, if this annual fee does that include, like Ms. Hanson just said, that it doesn't give us updates. That's just what happened a year ago. But if we pay this annual fee.
All that, all the annual fee does is keep, keep the data in the system, keep the access to the, you, you can.
Yeah, so we would still spend more money to get further.
And that's what we discussed of, most, most clients do it every other year of evaluation of roads. Because they take the video and then they have the computers which analyze that of what type of cracking, what kind of rates it. And I would think that would help, be helpful in OPWC applications and that where you can show that, yes, the condition of the road is this.
Well, I would entertain a motion to continue the, the PMG contract, which is the payment management group contract. The annual fee of fifteen hundred dollars. But that, I said, that doesn't give us anything. So is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Not, I haven't looked at it because you said we don't want to use it, but you want to continue it.
I just put it out there on, on the floor so we can get continued discussion. I, I mean, I've listened to what Mr. Bubba had to say and listen to you and listen to Jeff, I mean.
I think it's valuable resource.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. McKee?
No.
I guess.
I'm sorry, does someone, does someone want to reach out and let them know that we're not going to continue?
Okay, sure.
Um, I don't have much other than, um, the brandy mail loan is, uh, starting to be, with our payments at zero percent uh, for ten years. And I'm just wondering if I can just pay a full five thousand and fifty-seven dollars instead of making two hundred and fifty-nine payments.
I'll make a motion to allow you to pay that off in full.
One second. Discussion?
I have just one more thing off our budget, the last thing to worry about. How many checks you have? Twice a year you're going to make a check, so it's a lot of that stuff, personal, curb stores, just a lot of costs that should be worth it.
Twice a year.
I think the minimal amount of interest we would get.
That's exactly what was on it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
The water control, um, requests came through. Do, do you want me to sign that and send it back when we don't want?
Yeah, because this is basically they're changing their LLC and, um, interest on, nothing else has changed. It just got more people on their boards.
And I, I spoke to the prosecutor. He agrees to not protest unless there was an individual that we, we were concerned with and had actual proof, so. I, I'll make a motion to send this and we're, we're not requesting a year.
A second.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, two, three, zero, eight, one, five, zero. Are we doing one because the other one was voted down or two? One, okay, I think it's confusing, but two, two approved purchase orders?
That one additional one that was.
It's just one item on it?
Yeah. Board pleasure.
Second.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
We gotta go back to the transfer.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'll make a motion to transfer the funds as presented. I saw that in email. Do we have to?
Now, second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to ratify the payments as listed. A second.
Discussion?
Uh, the only thing I had is, uh, the Freddie Latella, uh, I saw from prosecutor that he recommended that we make a motion to change his duties. I saw a response from the administrator. Um, I think to do it properly, we should change those duties because he came in when Laura went, left when Laura came back. He was obviously going in for Laura. Uh, he's, he wasn't hired in as part of the administrative. So I think to do things properly, we should be, we should have a motion to allow that.
So I think I explained, I mean, there was, there was, except for the fact that he answered the phones, there was no part of Laura's job that he did. He was here because when Laura was on vacation the last time, I spent a significant amount of time answering the phones. The vast majority of which are zoning. I spent a significant amount of time greeting people, the vast majority of people who come in were zoning. While he was here, while Mrs. Brown was on vacation, he did answer the phones. The calls that were not zoning calls came to me. The people who came in that were seeking assistance that were not zoning were handled by me. I processed the mail. There were no other duties that Ms., uh.
Ready?
I'm sorry, that Ms. Brown does that are myriad. None of that was done by Mr. Latella. He did sit at her desk, but other than that, and he came and went because of the assistance in answering the phones while she was gone. But short of that, there were no other services that he provided that were part of her job duties. So.
But.
Based on that, I, I believe that there's no necessity to reallocate from one call to another, um, the payment for his time when he was here.
Right, I just, these are simple things that can be addressed before they occur. And as you stated, he came in when she left and answered, because when she, you didn't have a replacement for Laura, you were busy. So he came in. I'm just saying that just, we need to start doing things properly. And the prosecutor even said, there should be a motion. So in the future, I would ask that when people are used outside of their higher duties, that that be brought to court's attention. That's all.
So he was not used outside of his higher duties. I believe when the prosecutor gave his opinion, he didn't have all of the information about what was done. And I realize that you characterized my description as being absurd. However, it is, you're, Mr. Evans, have you ever once been in town hall during the day since I have been here? And I don't think you have an appreciation for what goes on on a day-to-day basis. And so I, I gave you an explanation about what was done and why. And I, I realize that you don't want to accept that.
No, I, I would just like to address the not here. That is on my attorney's advice because there are no security cameras here and for my protection. Laugh, laugh what you want, but that cost me over thirty-two hundred dollars to defend a false allegation. So I take it seriously. Put the security cameras back in here and you'll see me a lot more often here. So I have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes.
The motion to ratify.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, so I guess we can move on over to announcement and trustee comments. Please leave your, like, two minutes, three minutes for your trustee comments, please.
Yeah, I'd like to start. Uh, first, I'd like to welcome a new business to Edna Township, Paint Parties for Fun. Uh, they're having an open house this Saturday between one and five. Uh, they're connected to the post office right here on Pike. Uh, I think we should encourage more small businesses like that to come into Edna. I believe they were formerly in Baltimore. So if anybody wants to stop by there again, Saturday, one to five, Paint Parties for Fun, that, uh, next to the post office. Uh, second comment, um, I'd like to ask that the minutes, uh, be searchable online. I think it would help a lot of people when they're searching for things to be able to do that. Uh, currently, i- it's very difficult to find when something was discussed, uh, in a meeting there. And I think the last couple of meetings aren't, aren't posted. So if we can keep those, uh, updated, that'd be good. Uh, again, the hall security system, I checked today, the cameras were not installed. Uh, they, back in January seventeen twenty-three, uh, the board voted to have them installed. They're still not. Uh, that's a concern. Uh, again, public records requests are not being properly responded to. Uh, I think they should. And I, I was glad to hear that the fireworks were mentioned today. Uh, we're nineteen days away. I would ask that they be placed on our website, on our calendar. Get the word out because that's a weekend that a lot of people make plans for. And the sooner we can get the message out, the more people will come if it's for the community. So, uh, I don't know why the delay, but, you know, things like this, once we approve it, we should probably put it on the calendar website and start getting that word out instead of waiting just a couple of weeks before.
Well, just so you know that, um, it is going to be out there. There was some editing that needed to happen. So that will be out there. Um, so we're excited about the fireworks. Uh, we want family, friends, neighbors, come out, bring a blanket, your chairs. We have plenty of food trucks, fireworks, um, music. I think they're talking about having an act throw for the adults.
Really?
Yeah, he's mentioned that, so that should be fun.
Is that really good for this object?
So it should be fun. It should be fun. So, but it's, it.
Act throw with the trustees.
How about a dunking machine?
Yeah.
Oh, we could raise a budget for that. Actually, do, do you want to do that? Let's, let's do that. Dunk, dunk, dunk for the charity, for the bridges.
We may be able to.
For the bridges.
Talk about some of that soon.
I'll do that.
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, I'm not against it. I would love to see something like that. Yeah, we'll, we'll put that down as a, Mrs.
The biggest fundraiser.
Something in, in the works for the township. That would be fun.
Just, can we keep the actions as far away from that one as possible? These people would be there grinding in the ashes.
There's a decor on three ten, starting.
Oh, it's starting already?
It already started.
You don't know about it?
It's already started.
Yep, yeah, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
We do it all the time.
A second? Roll call, sir?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. We want to laugh enough. That's wonderful. It feels good.